Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Remote Town of Litchfield Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, July 7, In response to COVID-19 pandemic, the Planning Board will conduct a remote meeting pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 related to public meetings. The town office will be closed to the public and only three people will be physically present. Meeting will be broadcast live on Litchfield TV and YouTube channels. In addition, the public can call to listen to the meeting or provide public testimony during a public comment session. Public testimony can also be submitted to the town office during business hours or sent by email no later than 2:00 PM on Monday, July 6, 2020. Please contact Joan McKibben, Planning Board Administrator. Okay. I'm going to forego the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everybody. We'll do, I guess, roll call of members. Michael Proto, Chair.
Kimberly Coin, Vice Chair.
James Buffetti, Member.
Ron Stevens, Member. Anybody else?
Kate Stevens, Member.
Okay. Good evening.
Kate Stevens is here on the phone. I'm sorry, my computer's frozen and I can't get it to work. So I'm on the phone for now.
Okay. Great. Anybody else? Okay. So there's six of us. We have a quorum. Before we get started tonight, I'm just going to open it up, as we usually do, to public input. Are there any members of the public that have input they'd like to add and non-agenda items for this evening? Okay. Hearing none, I will close public input and we will go on to the business at hand, which is Mel's Funway, application by KBT Realty Trust, site plan modification 454 Charles Bancroft Highway Map 20 Lot 17. Applicant proposes to extend certain deadlines due to pandemic impacts. Is the applicant on the call or on the Zoom?
Mr. Chairman, Andrew Prohlman here for KBT Realty Trust in Mel's Funway Park. I'm not sure if Michael or Wayne will be joining us, but they have the information to join us if they do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening. So why don't you give us a little background on this and see what's going on?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much. Again, for the record, Andy Prohlman for the applicant. And I'm here tonight to tell you that the pandemic really didn't number on Mel's. We had a long approval process. We ended up with a good plan. Mike Ackmando and Wayne Copeland were ready to go. And then weeks after, we get our approval on March 3. The schedule starts falling.
Does the camera on?
There's Wayne. The whole schedule and it just went out of whack. And then the governor's orders started hitting up. And so we are here today to hopefully modify some digs and a couple tweaks to the plan. So what happened was before the tour, they may, rather, and at that time, Mel's was still trying to open. They could open up. I'm getting a lot of background noise. Mel's could start opening up the mini golf at that point and a couple of the features of the park, but they really couldn't open up. And it wasn't until June 29th, when the amusement park order came down from the governor, that Mel's could really start getting back on track. So it's June 29th, a week ago or so. So this pandemic really just set the clock back for what they wanted to do. And so, you know, I want to be brief. You have my submittal that I filed with the board on June 16th. And we have a couple of points to talk about. You will recall, number one, that the Carnage Haunt out back was supposed to be removed by August 31st. And that was going to be swapped out. The haunt was going to be swapped into Pavilion Number Two. I'll get to that. But the Carnage, because of the pandemic, because Mel's amusement parks was not an essential business, they really could not hire crew, start ordering trucks or dumpsters or whatnot to work on Carnage. So they got completely set back on the timeline to remove Carnage. And so what we're asking is, we had a deadline of August 31st, the Carnage be removed. We are asking to modify the plan to have that deadline pushed back to December 31st so that Mel's will be using Carnage this year as a haunt. And this would be the final year that we would see Carnage being used as a haunt. And it would be removed by December 31st. So we're asking for the four-month pushback of that deadline. Number two, is I'm talking about Pavilion Number Two. But before I do that, you will recall that we had agreed on the plan, we showed the renderings, that the shiplapped siding would be installed, would be installed on Pavilions Number One and Two, and they would be stained the brown that you see today. And I took a tour of the site last night. Pavilion Number One has been fully enclosed with the barnboard siding. It has been stained and it is just about done. The one piece missing, there's some vertical trim where the shiplapped siding joints meet and there's some vertical trim that's supposed to hide that. That's not been installed yet. But other than that, that's a quick couple hours of work. Other than that, Pavilion Number One has been done. Pavilion Number Two is halfway done. The siding has been installed on two of the four sides. And our proposal is to keep Pavilion Number Two as it is today, where the western and southern sides of Pavilion Number Two are open. And we intend to use that for the food and bar area for this year's Spooky World. And we do so because Carnage will be operating and that will be the existing food and bar and service area for the guests. And again, last year that this happened for Pavilion Number Two, Pavilion Number Two will be completed by December 31st, which is our request. And we want to do that with Pavilion Number Two because the haunts that were supposed to go into Pavilion Number Two never materialized on a national level. And Wayne can explain this better if he wants, but with the pandemic shutdown, as I explained in my memo, the national trade shows and the national manufacturers of haunt supplies and props and blood and guts and everything that goes with these haunts just stopped. The trade shows were all canceled. The manufacturers never ramped up. And so folks like Wayne and Mike and who have haunts across the country are in the same boat. There was just no material, no product being made for this year. So we want to keep Carnage as it is, keep Pavilion Number Two as it is. And then after this year's Spooky World, both get completed by December 31st. And that's number two. And again, you know, please stop me with any questions along the way. Number three is, we have a temporary food cart. If folks have been by the park, they may have seen that there's a small food cart by the corporate tent area. And that's a temporary use that has been discussed at the Board of Selectmen. And that's just to replace the food service Mel's Diner was providing for this season that Mel's Diner is not providing for this season because the operator of Mel's Diner just decided it just didn't make any financial sense to open up this year. So Mike and Wayne brought in a food cart, the same vendor who provides the food services to Spooky World season. And it's a small eight-by-16 food cart. They just serve the basics, hot dogs, sausages, Coke and Pepsi, whatnot. And the Board of Selectmen waived any enforcement that matters with respect to that for a 90-day food cart service. And the 90 days runs right up until the park shuts down to start setting up in Spooky World. It runs until September 12th. So we're asking, we're showing that on the plan that I marked up. And if the board were to approve, we would have to keep your guys do a full plan revision and submit that to Joan for internal approval. We don't see recording another plan with these minor changes, but we would have that submitted to the town. And then I had a couple of minor plan modifications that you see I marked up in my submittal. We're widening a stone dust footpath. We're eliminating some grass strips and moving some trees. Really minor stuff, but we wanted to show them to you as we're going through this process. And Mr. Chairman, that's all I had. Maybe Wayne, if you want to add anything to that description?
No, I think it was fine. I think everything was said well. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I'll be... Am I on? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Nope, that's absolutely fine at this time. I'll be happy to answer any questions for anybody. You know, I think everything was well said.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I have a couple of questions. Let's start with the food cart. Is that a temporary structure that was put up there?
It was rolled in on the wheels that are low hidden. And it will be wheeled away and eventually it will be wheeled away back to the food service area for Spooky World.
So I'm a little confused as to what you're asking for from the planning board. It looks like the Board of Selectmen already voted not to enforce potential violations of your conditionally approved site plan regarding that. So why are you coming to us if it's already been approved by the Board of Selectmen? Why bother coming to us?
Well, because we're here and we wanted to show it to you. And we have a second plan markup.
It sounds like that you're asking us to ratify what the Board of Selectmen has already given you approval to do.
In a sense, you're correct.
Yeah. It's not like it's totally right.
You know, you could leave it alone, that feature of it. But we figured we were coming here, we'll show it to you. That's what we're doing. It's temporary. And the board can act on it, but why not?
Well, right. But if the issue's already been decided by the Board of Selectmen, I'm just wondering why you even put this in front of us? And maybe someone can answer that question because it doesn't seem to make any sense to me. It's already been decided. Why are you asking me to confirm something that's already been decided by the Board of Selectmen?
Well, in all honesty, there's some backstory to that. We're seeing the town council. The town council suggested, yes, the Selectmen have weighed in on it. We've got to do the planning board since you're going there anyway. And again...
Attorney Prohlman, I'm having a hard time hearing you. You're cutting out a little bit, at least.
You're cutting out, Andy. We can't really hear you very good.
Okay. Is that any better?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that. Well, the truth is, we had that, Mr. Buffetti, we had that same kind of back and forth on our end. Do we show this? The Selectmen have already kind of weighed in on it. But town council, Laura Inspector Morgan, talking with her, she said, Andy, you may as well show it to the board. You're going there anyway on a couple of matters. Show it to the board, tell them exactly what you're doing. And they can approve or not approve or leave it alone. So that's all we're trying to do. We're just simply showing you what we're doing, why it's there and how it came to be.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so you're not asking us to approve anything. You're asking us, you're just informing us of what the Board of Selectmen did, right? The decision's already made, it's already there. You're asking us to, you're just informing us that this decision was made by the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah. I'm not sure you necessarily need to act up on that piece at all, but it's there so you see what we're doing.
Okay. And so, can I just say, you know, we spent a lot of time with this issue and we spent a lot of time going over this plan. I'm just curious as to why you would go to the Board of Selectmen in the first instance? I thought that we had an agreement that you would come back to the Planning Board with these kinds of issues as they came up. That was a point of contention in the prior hearings we've had. And then it looks, so it looks like, and I don't know how this all played out, but it looks like you actually did an end run around the Planning Board and you went to the Board of Selectmen, got them to approve something that you wanted, and then came to us and said, here, it's already been approved. I don't understand, based on your representations to us, that you would in fact come back to the Planning Board. Why didn't you come back to us in the first instance?
Because Mel's Funway Park was trying to provide food service to their guests at the time. And they brought the cart out, the same vendor that is out there for Spooky World. And so, once they brought the cart out, and again, there's been food service out at the corporate tents for years without a mission, so we didn't take anything of it.
Could I answer that as well? Would you mind? I think I can answer this very well. Andy?
Yeah, please.
Can you hear me? What it is, is we certainly don't mean any disrespect to the board whatsoever. What happened is, very specifically, the coronavirus hit. We had a full agreement and we were just about to sign a lease with a restaurant. That restaurant, of course, which understandably, who says he's coming back next year if coronavirus is gone by then, suddenly vacated, he vanished. So what happened was, we served food out of that area, and it's a corporate food area anyway. So we did put the food cart out there. And then a neighbor had complained about it, said, why I haven't seen anything on the plan? And what had happened specifically is, it's not an end around at all. It's exactly what has happened in every single community surrounding Litchfield. Specifically, in Manchester, the Board of Selectmen decided specifically that they were allowed to put their restaurants on the sidewalk. In Nashua, it was the, I don't have my notes of exactly, I did some research on who it was, but it was not the Planning Board who made these decisions. They actually closed down streets in Nashua and actually put the restaurants' chairs in the streets. Sounds absurd, but of course, communities are getting together, trying to help businesses through this coronavirus, doing anything it takes, helping us to get business. If we were to go to the Planning Board from scratch, there's no way we would have missed the entire summer by the time that thing happened. Because first of all, it takes many days to even get in the agenda. And then there's an appeal period afterwards after that time period. The summer would have effectively just about been over by the time we would have received our permit. So it's not an end around at all to the Planning Board. And I don't want the Planning Board to think that at all. There is no end around. Alls we're doing is trying to survive as a business. There's no way to serve food there this year out of the restaurant, unfortunately. And we had to get permitted as soon as possible. So that's what we did, is we approached the Selectmen in that case and asked for some Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can I have a follow-up? So Attorney Prohlman's submission, he says, he writes, "We respectfully request that the Board confirm the Board of Selectmen's approval for the 90-day food cart service." So my question, maybe Jay, you can answer it. Do we have to confirm or approve the Board of Selectmen's decision here? Or is it just already been made? They have the authority as the Board of Selectmen to make those decisions and we don't approve anything here?
This is Jay responding. I don't have the letter from Troy at my fingertips. I can get it shortly. But my understanding is, is that the Board of Selectmen did not approve the food cart. They elected not to take enforcement action for a period of 90 days. So that, you know, from my perspective, the food cart remains in violation. It's simply a decision not to take enforcement action. So the Board is certainly not compelled, the Planning Board is not compelled to approve the temporary location of the food cart if it chooses not to. But I do not believe that this is an approved location. It's merely that the Board declined to take enforcement action.
This is Kim. We still have a compliance hearing that's due September 1st, right? Is this trying to push that date out because of the COVID? I think they want to keep using the Carnage past that review date, right?
Until September 12. That's correct.
But we still have, don't we still have the hearing on September 1st?
We, unless the Board chooses to change that, to change the period of compliance, yes, we do. We have a hearing planned for September 1st.
Okay. Right. So tentatively, it's September 1st unless, and I think that's why they're here this evening before, they want to see if they can extend the deadline. So that's really the issue. I ask another question.
Andy Prohlman here. We certainly have no objection coming back September 1st to let you know what's been done in completion of various improvements. But that food cart would be there until September 12.
Well, I think the question that Kim had was really about the compliance piece in general. Because we did agree at the meeting when we conditionally approved this project that everything was going to be completed by August 31st and then we would have a compliance meeting on September 1st. So I think that was really what her, I think her question was.
So could I ask a question?
Yes.
It's Jim Buffetti again. So in terms of the removal of the Carnage and the swapping off to something that's going to happen in Pavilion Number Two, as I understand it, so it sounds to me, from your presentation, Attorney Prohlman, that the issue isn't really that you can't remove that Carnage, which, you know, I think we would all agree, is a pretty unsightly collection of stuff out there. That's not the problem as much as that you can't get the supplies and equipment that you would need to run the substitute haunt for, I'm not sure that's what you call it, but that you don't have access to the supplies to run a substitute event in Pavilion Two. Do I understand that right?
That's correct. But don't underestimate, you know, removal of Carnage. That's not an easy task. That's not an afternoon's job. That's a full crew for some weeks. But you're correct. Even if we could, it'd be nothing to replace the Carnage haunt. So they'd be down a haunt going into this season. And that affects, that would affect their reputation, that would affect the turnout, that would affect the impact upon the Spooky World. And so the goal is to just use it this last year. And then hopefully, everything comes back and they can have the, you know, the haunt, the haunt manufacturers, the haunt trade shows come back for 2021.
So I guess, I don't understand, I've never experienced this haunt, but are there supplies that go into the substitute event in Pavilion Two that you don't currently use for the haunt?
Do you want me to answer that? Andy? Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Buffetti. I think I heard your question. It's a little bit broken up, but I believe I heard it correctly. You're asking, why couldn't that be done? Every year, I'd just like to explain to the board a little bit about what happens. It's funny that every year in March, we go to the National Halloween Show. That's where we buy all of our supplies, all of our props, all of our things. That show was at first postponed until August and then it was canceled completely because they could not have any, they simply could not have any show this year due to the COVID. Therefore, we can't go and we can't create a new haunt out of nothing. So we're asking for that Carnage just to remain, just an extra few months and then it will be gone. That's all we're asking, just to get through this season.
And so what is the likelihood, given the state of the pandemic, that you're actually going to be able to conduct the haunt as you have in the past? Have you already made plans for doing that?
Absolutely. We're in the process, always working with the government and maintaining compliance, which we've done with Mel's Funway Park completely and entirely. I don't know if anybody has had a chance to go to Mel's Funway Park and if they've had a chance to see all the signage, we're pretty proud of it. And we're pretty proud of what we're doing with the social distancing. And with Spooky World, we're looking into some other options on ways to safely social distance people. We probably won't have the big, you know, as large a crowds this year, obviously, because a certain percentage of people, just they're not coming out this year. It's just happening. Like, our business is way off. That's going to happen no matter what, I think, any business this year. Because I think a certain percentage of people are just going to be like, hey, you know what? No matter what, I'm not going out this year. But we will social distance everybody and we will also adhere to any and all government regulations that come out. And they literally change pretty much, seems weakly, you know? But we'll adapt to them, whatever they may be.
Okay. So I think I understand your answer. I appreciate it. Thank you. What I thought I heard you say was that you would have to purchase certain supplies that you would need to set up this alternative haunt.
Exactly.
And that you don't need them to run the old haunt.
Correct. We don't have an option to create the new haunt because there's no show to go to to buy the supplies this year and see what we need. So we don't even have an option really for that this year. There can be new haunt. It's a problem that's, it's a problem pretty much faced by every haunted attraction.
We also don't have the crew either that we used to have. We used to have a 10-man crew working on Halloween. We now have a two-man crew working on Halloween also right now. We just, the people aren't out there. The bodies don't want to work right now. And it's very difficult to social distance people when you're trying to build a haunt or even if you're trying to take down a haunt. I mean, a lot of you have seen Carnage. You don't like Carnage. We're looking forward to the removal of Carnage also. But if you're removing all the products and the wood and the timber and everything in there, you have to have a lot of people working on top of each other, almost in a construction site atmosphere, trying to do all that. And we just don't have the bodies to do it. We don't want to put our staff on top of each other either doing that. Even though all our team has masks, it's just a difficult time to try to get, because this is the second job that a lot of our construction guys come in and work, and a lot of them are still laid off. A lot of them still haven't gone back to work. And they're definitely not going to come to us if they haven't even been able to go back to their other jobs yet. So, I mean, from 10 people to two people.
Michael, you're breaking up. Mike?
Task that 10 you used to do. It's just important. That's why this year, it's the first time we would ever be running a show.
You're breaking up.
Yeah. Can anybody hear me?
No, you're totally in and out and breaking up.
I apologize.
Yeah, we're having some, we had some difficulty getting on today. Yeah, we're having some, we had some difficulty getting on today.
The board should know that Michael and Wayne have yet to invite me to attend one of these conferences, so-called conferences down in Orlando, a year after year. Very disappointing.
It's actually in St. Louis.
Well, there's three of them throughout the year. So Orlando, St. Louis, it's also in Ohio. All of the shows were canceled this year.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would just say, you know, and I'll honestly, I don't think we're making that big of an ask tonight. We have some minor plan modifications. We're pushing dates for very specific things, the carnage in Pavilion Number Two, and that's about it. Everything is hopefully going to stay on track, push back a month, the completion of the blockways and the bumper boats and the mini-mills area with the bouncy houses. But we're really just asking for a pushback to dates from December, August 31st to December 31st and then the minor plan modifications.
This is Jay interjecting. Just for clarification, I did bring up the letter that we received on the action of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Now, this is Kim. How much of carnage is part of your business? Because you do have, you have the Haunted Hayride still, right? I'm trying to think, I'm trying to remember of all the attractions you had. What are the other events that you're promoting other than carnage?
We have five haunted attractions in total. One of them is a 3D, as you can see, which is one of the pavilions actually, then there's Carnage, and then we have the Wooded Walk, and then we have the Manor, you know, which is one of the staples, of course. And then we have the, of course, we have the Haunted Hayride, which is another attraction. So we have five haunted attractions. We've always had no less than five haunted attractions. We don't want to try and go through this year with any less than five haunted attractions. That would be like, that would not work. People would hit the roof, like, you know, people are used to coming there and, you know, seeing we're, we think one of the best shows in all of New England and, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to disappoint the customers who do come out this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So this is Jim. One of the issues that came up last year was the amount of noise that was generated through some sort of cannons or something as part of that attraction. Has, have you given any consideration to that? I think we talked about trying to tamp that down. It sounds like that it was disruptive, even probably bordering on a nuisance for the neighbors. So what are your plans? If this, if you can continue to operate the haunt and we agreed, have you modified it at all so that you reduce the inconvenience to your neighbors?
Yes, yes, we have. As a matter of fact, it's in the plans now, Andy, I believe, if I recall, there's even some language in there on the plans and that.
That's correct. This is Buffetti, Andy Prohm here. We're not changing that piece of the plan at all. And you may recall that with respect to that bird cannon, we had set a limit, we limited the hours on it, and I'm trying to find it, oh, here it is, note 32 on the plan says, "No bird cannon noise after 10:00 PM." And so we're not, we're not looking to change that, we're not looking to increase that, you know, we're not touching that piece of the plan at all.
Thank you. So, you know, I guess, you know, you know, I know that a lot has happened the last couple of months with COVID-19 and everything, which is unfortunate. And at the same time, we, I think, you know, just, we need to make sure we focus on what it is that we set out to do originally, and that was that there was an agreement that certain things were to take place, that were going to be conditional approvals, and that the board agreed to those conditional approvals, one of them being the taking down of the carnage haunt, that was the main one, also putting up barn board and different things like that. So, I mean, I don't know, you know, when you started to do, you know, all of the work to get, you know, to get going on this, whether it was, you know, right at the time of the pandemic or what, but I just want to understand that, you know, we, we conditionally approve things and there were agreements made, I guess with the parties, in my understanding. And, you know, that, you know, that has, you can't, you can't just ignore that, right? But with that said, you know, we are in a state of, you know, of emergency right now, I guess you'd call it, with the, with the whole virus thing. And, you know, I don't know, I mean, you say December 31st is the deadline, but I guess my question is, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with this virus. You know, there's a lot of, you're seeing a lot of states now where the numbers are starting to increase again. Things could happen, things could change, and, you know, that may, may affect things down the road. I don't know. It sounds as though you're thinking that this is going to, you know, you're going to have this event again this year. But again, keeping that in mind, you know, we, I think as a board, I think we want to see that, you know, that there is some sort of compliance being met. Now, with that said, Jay, you had, you had a couple of comments that you, I remember speaking with you, you had a couple of comments that you wanted to add regarding the minor improvements?
Yeah, I mean, really, I have more questions than anything that they're problematic, but I wonder if the applicant could speak to the rationale for the minor improvements that are requested, the widening of the stone dust pass, elimination of the grass strips, and relocation of the cherry trees?
I got, one of the reasons, the cherry trees that were put in that area, when they were first put in, I thought they were going to be put in bushes. I'm just going to be honest, I didn't realize they were cherry trees. That area right there is only about 20 feet wide from the building to the edge of the pool. These trees grow 20 feet to 30 feet high and wide. So these two trees are just going to get tangled in each other and they're not going to grow, they're not going to do what they're supposed to do, which has become beautiful, which is, which is supposed to enhance our property. And also, as we all know, these blossom beautifully and then all the petals dump on us within a matter of two to three weeks. So looking at that particular spot, I had looked at another spot, which was by the Kitty Land, off of the backside of the restaurant where the patio is, and thought, those trees can be separated now, so now they can grow and they can be the size that they're supposed to be. They're still going to be seen from 3A, they're still going to be seen from the bumper boats, they're still going to be seen from the restaurants, they're going to be seen from Kitty Land, and they're going to be able to do what they're supposed to do. In the other area, I have, and I apologize, I have no idea why those were ever stuck in that spot. Whoever decided to just stick them and drop them there and I'll take the blame because I never noticed it. And you can ask Andy, the second I saw it, I immediately called him. They're never going to have the potential to grow and do what they're supposed to do. They're going to have to get pruned, they're going to have to get cut, they're going to have to get chopped. To fit in that spot there, you're trying to put 60 feet worth of tree in a 20-foot area. It's just not going to work right there. And I, again, I'll take the bullet, I never noticed it until, you know, just a couple of months ago when I called Andy and said, "We have a problem." And that's why I picked the spot, and I didn't pick a spot where they're hidden, they're right out in the open. I think that they'll even hide more of the back area once these two trees go where they are. And I think they're going to look 10 times more beautiful where they are because they will grow to the potential that a cherry tree should grow to. And the reason that we opened up the path a little bit is we had a four-foot path that was in there. With the pandemic going on, we decided that, you know what, four feet just isn't enough room for people to feel comfortable walking back and forth. So we wanted to open that up to eight feet because who knows what tomorrow's going to bring, or next month, or next year's going to bring with this pandemic. But by having it eight feet now, people can safely move back and forth from one another without feeling that they're on top of each other and they'll feel comfortable moving back and forth. The reason in the other area that we wanted to remove that little spot is to be able to keep that grass, which again, was something that should have been earlier, it's about a three-foot wide area, maybe even a two-foot area, with the bouncy houses next to them, they're going to get shut out from light, they're not going to get water, they're not going to grow the way they're supposed to, that little bit of grass, and it's going to end up dying and being useless there. By putting the straight path across it, we won't get mud when it rains from that area that'll come out, it'll just be a nice flat pad area. And we're only, like I said, it's only about a three-foot area in between each bouncy house that would be turned into just that pad area. So it's not 10 feet, it's not 20, it's the tiniest of the alleyway, and you didn't notice it until you're out there and they're actually digging it and they're starting to put the area together and then you look back and you're saying, "Oh my God, it looks so much bigger on paper." But when you're staring at it and you see this little two-foot, three-foot area, you know that that's never going to have the potential to do what it's supposed to. So we thought the best thing to do would be to smooth it and to make it one flat area.
Okay. If I could just, I'm getting, I guess, I don't know why. I'll try again. Just to clarify, if the board should approve the request for making this evening, what we would anticipate would be a revised site plan that would be submitted that would show a change in the date for the removal of carnage to December 31st. It would show the change to Pavilion Number Two. It would show the minor plan modifications that we just mentioned, the widening of the stone dust pass, the elimination of the grass strips, and the relocation of the two cherry trees. And that would be the extent of the changes to the site plan. With regard to the food cart, that would not be something that would be shown on the modified site plan. That was something that you intended to, in essence, draw on the plan and have approved administratively, separate from the modifications to the site plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Before I open it up to public input, is there anybody else who have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Kate Stevens on the phone.
Yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
I can, if everyone else can.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to note, so you're saying the reason why you went with the food carts first and then came back to ask for permission later is because the appeal process, or the appeal period and the, you know, the process to get everything approved takes too long, which is understandable, you know, you have to react quickly in situations like this to survive as a business. So what can we, I guess my question is for Jay, is there a way, say they had come to the signing board, you know, the next available meeting, is there a way to speed up that approval process for if something like this were to happen in the future, to avoid this kind of runaround?
There is. You know, I will say that one of the things that probably do need to work on is a more formal process for minor modifications to the plan, but it would be possible. So there's a couple of things that are possible. One, it's possible that the board could waive several of its regulations, two, in essence, allow something like that to proceed. Board could determine if it felt that it could within the confines of the regulations. Actually, I really can't get there, but, but basically through waivers, you could. Secondly, with regard to the appeal period, while the appeal period is an issue, the appeal period isn't a bar against getting a building permit or moving forward. Any applicant could proceed at their own risk once they have approval. So there are some things that could be done. I will say, some communities were proactive in that they decided that they were simply going to allow things like expanded outdoor seating without requiring people to come through a planning board review process. So that was kind of done in more or less, in a response to the emergency, but it was done at a policy level. So, you know, the planning board actually met, discussed it, and decided that they were going to allow, you know, outdoor dining on a temporary basis that weren't going to require people to come in. I mean, that's really very informal and that's probably less than ideal, but it's a way of responding to the current situation. That's certainly something that the board, you know, could elect to do. I can't speak for the Selectmen, I don't know if that was the thinking for the Board of Selectmen, but, you know, that is an option. I think longer term, coming up with a more formal procedure or process, you know, is probably something we should contemplate. I don't know if that was helpful.
Okay. Yes, it is. I would just, I guess, I would just ask Wayne and Michael then if you, so I think as a board, we need to look at making that a more formal procedure. And because I would expect that next year, we're probably going to be dealing with something similar to this, even if things are relaxed, you know, you don't know if you're, if the diner owner is going to come back or not, like he plans to, but, you know, maybe we'll be in the same situation next year, we're just not, we just don't know. So I would ask that next year, if you can at least, you know, send a note, like, "Hey, can you talk about this at your next meeting," even if it's not a formal approval for our site, but give, you know, just give the board a heads up instead of, instead of just reacting and putting something out there and waiting for somebody to complain about it to go before the board. I think if we can kind of make that informal deal, I guess, we'll work on it on our end and if you can work on it on your end for next year, that will keep that in mind.
That's right. We would certainly agree to that.
And other than that, I think it makes sense to keep carnage, you know, everybody's kind of making concessions as communities to keep, try to keep our businesses afloat. So I think everything else makes, makes sense to keep carnage this year and it might even have to be next year. I don't know if you can't get the supplies for a new haunt by next year, but, you know, good luck on that.
Thank you, yeah. No, I don't want the board to feel at all that it was an end around whatsoever. I was really angry, to be honest with you, when I, when I, when we caught some flak from the town on that food. We've always had food there, but that's fine, but we just, in conversations with Andy and my business partner, we needed to get that done immediately and that didn't seem like a very quick resolve at all. And again, every other community was jumping in to help businesses through this crisis and the ordinary things, what you would ordinarily do, really necessarily didn't apply in this instance. And the town really did come through for us at the end of the day and we really appreciate that. And I think Andy, like, getting back to that, where we didn't want to like disrespect the board in any way, and that's part of why, it goes back to the beginning, at the very beginning of the meeting, of course, we want to put it in the plan, we want to show you what we're doing, we want to have an open dialogue. We just, you know what, to be honest with you, it's just, we're taking it day by day to get through this coronavirus and, you know, we're just doing what we have to do to try and get every day to the next day. So it's not easy. Got big bags under my eyes, not sleeping well, not easy, but we're trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'm going to open it up to public input. Any members of the public who wish to speak at this time on the issue before the board?
Yes, Rick Sarpino, 401, Charles Banker of Tyle.
Thank you.
I don't even know where to begin to start. So... So you made a, at the, we've been through many meetings with these guys over and over again. Last, at the final meeting last time, they agreed, any changes that they made, any buildings that were put up would come before the planning board. And this isn't the first building that's been put up or things that have been added without site plan approval. There's been many, many buildings out there. I think when you guys took a walk on the, out for the haunted hayride, went from eight haunts to eight things to how many are out there? There's just on and on the things that happen out here. We, I with my attorney, agreed on, they were gonna remove carnage. And when that got removed, we let other things go. For instance, the lighting that they have out there doesn't even come close to meeting the town's standards. So if you're gonna open up a site plan and you're gonna allow these things, then we should allow discussion again on lighting because none of the lighting meets your requirements, they far exceed that. We agreed to drop other cases that we had pending in court because carnage was gonna go away. Now it's not. Unfortunately, Morgan's not here tonight, but this isn't gonna go away very easily. Carnage needs to go. There was some false statements made earlier that said that Spooky World isn't considered a necessity. I agree, but construction is. Any construction that needed to be done, whether it's on to construct things at Spooky World or construct a mall or a building or a highway, or all have never slowed down. There's no reason why they can't finish the work that they started. There's no reason why they couldn't remove Spooky World. I have 350 employees that do construction, so I know what the standards are and I know what needs to be done. There's no reason why carnage can't be removed. They can build a haunt inside that building, they're creative, they could put a haunt inside that building, however they wanted to do it. That's where it needs to be. It's not up to, it's not just because we're gonna, we're gonna go six more months or one more, whatever, because it's not, just not gonna end. It never ends. It's always, we always have an excuse why things can't get done the way they were supposed to get done. And here we are again, we're not gonna get things done. Carnage has been, we've been going at carnage for two years now and we always let it keep going. And now it's time for it to go. It's a junkyard, it is a junkyard, nobody has a right to see, look at a junkyard from the, from the right of way. You can see it from the right of way, it's a pile of junk. Go out there, you saw it, it's old barrels, it's old buses, it's junk. I can't have it, nobody can have it when you can see it from 3A. It needs to go away. They need to clean the mess up and make it go away. And we're gonna object, whatever we have to do, appeal or whatever, if the board decides to let this go forward. Well, I don't know what Morgan's gonna advise me to do, but there's gonna be, this is not right, that they can leave that again. They can make a haunt, maybe their trade shows didn't go away, but they know how to make haunts, they can get the stuff that they need, I'm sure. Everybody that wants to do something can do it. You wanna come up with excuses, you can do that too. And that's what's happening here, their excuses. They're gonna object to me saying their excuses, I already know that, but they are. And I think the board needs to enforce what the plan was. I think before you consider that food cart to be out there, I think it should be removed. And then consider what they want, the changes they wanna make. Can't, you're setting a precedence because tomorrow, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just advise anybody, even myself, I might as well go build it and then get approval for it, because that's what we should do, because that's the easiest way. That's what's happening here, continually happens here. All I got.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the applicant want to comment, respond?
Yes, a couple of things. Apparently, Mr. Charbonneau did not get the memo that we're in the middle of a pandemic. And Mel's is not the same size as Continental Paving and they have constraints that larger companies may not have. That's number one. And again, the asks that we're presenting to the board tonight, breathing is minor and we know our obligation to get rid of carnage, not try to duck anything. But two weeks after approval, emergency orders started coming out and I've never encountered anything like that. I suspect Mr. Charbonneau has never encountered anything like that. And it was a dramatic, dramatic hit to Mel's. And to not have the least bit of sympathy for a pandemic to a small business is ridiculous. Second, I shared our application with Attorney Hollis when I submitted it back on June 16th. And I received shortly thereafter, 50 minutes later, I had an email from Morgan Hollis telling us, thank you, we are good on this end. And that's a quote. So it's a complete surprise to me that we're getting the same complaints from Mr. Charbonneau when his attorney tells me that we are good on this end. I was not expecting this at all tonight. And finally, I really think Litchfield and every community has an obligation to work with their small businesses to get through this pandemic as best they can. We're not asking for anything we didn't represent in the past, we're just asking that the two major pieces be delayed a couple of months, that's it.
So I guess I can, there was no discussion with me and my attorney that carnage was gonna stay. That wasn't there. The only thing that there was any discussion about was for this little restaurant thing to be there. And again, they say, they're still serving ice cream, they could have sold hot dogs and hamburgers where they're selling ice cream. They own the restaurant, there's a window, a side window, that they could have done the same thing and sold hamburgers and hot dogs out of their restaurant. They could have done that, but they didn't. They put this building up without a permit and they have a big sign on it, without a permit. So it just, if it was the only thing that ever happened out there, probably wouldn't be many arguments. But it's nonstop, it's always somebody else's fault. We've heard it was the building inspector's fault, it was this guy's fault, it was that guy's fault, it's never their fault. They just don't do things the way they say they're gonna do them. And then they come in for approvals after they're done. How many times is this gonna happen? It's just gonna keep happening. And I know Andy's gonna object to that and that's what I'm saying, but it's true, think about it. The board members that weren't here from the beginning, I've been following this all the way through and it just continues. They show a site plan, then they park cars all over the place, they, it's just on and on, the things that they try to do. And we have to just keep watching and get them to reel it in. It goes on and on and it's time for the planning board to enforce what they approved. And that's what we need. If it was just, I probably wouldn't have said one word if it was about just the restaurant. But when carnage is staying, I have a problem with that. And we need, it needs to go away. Whatever, whatever it is, I don't know what it's gonna be, it's gonna be a battle and it's gonna be it, that's, that's fine. But we'll, we'll have to find out what that's gonna be.
Is any other members of the public out there this evening wish to make any comments? John, is there anyone else on the?
No, there is no one else.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. What do you folks wanna do? What do you think? We have, obviously, we have options on the table. We can either, you know, set the original deadline as proposed in the conditional approval that we approved back, I believe it was in March, was it March? Yeah. Or we can grant an extension due to the situation that has happened. Yeah, I think, you know, I think, and, you know, I agree, you know, the pandemic is a problem. It created a lot of problems for a lot of people. But at the same time, you know, we have conditional approvals for a reason. And, you know, this isn't something that, you know, was just decided on recently. I mean, I think the applicant has known about it for a while. As I said, I don't know when the applicant decided to start doing whatever construction they had to do to get things moving. But, you know, the agreement was that carnage was going to come down. That was part of the conditional approval process. And there was agreement to that. And, you know, now it's, I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough thing because, you know, on the one hand, you have this agreement that was both parties and you have the agreement that basically was incorporated into the plan. And then you have this virus that just happened to come along at the city hall and wreak havoc on everybody. But I guess the question becomes, you know, do we hold the applicant to that rigid standard? Or do we say, well, you know, things happen, we need to, we need to, you know, we can agree to extend it. So, I mean, these are the, these are the issues, it's not an easy thing. And I understand both positions and I appreciate both positions. And I think both positions have valid points. The question is, you know, what, what has to be done? I think, you know, too, I mean, I think I would have liked to have seen some, you know, plans for the meeting as to what was gonna be modified and what was not gonna be modified or whatever. Instead of, you know, coming to us, you know, like this and then not having anything before us in terms of plans. It's kind of important, I think, to do that, if you're an applicant, to at least give the board some notice and to provide them with something to review. That's my own two cents.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry for interrupting the board discussion, but, you know, we did submit our application on June 16th that had planned markups in the narrative of what we're doing.
Okay. All right. So I guess is what is the will, I mean, what is the will of the board? What do we wanna see happen? Kim, what are you, what are you, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking there were five requests from Attorney Pearlman and we could maybe address one at a time with votes. And then maybe after that decide whether to do that. But I would recommend, because if we, if we do all this lump together, it may be more difficult unless we can, I think it's easy if we treat each one yea or nay and go from there, but that, that's my opinion.
Okay. Kate, what's your thought?
That actually sounds like a good idea, I think, going through one by one.
Okay. James, what do you think?
So I listened carefully to everything that was said and I appreciate all of that. I think Mr. Charbonneau is correct in that construction is not a non-essential business. That is, it was always an essential business in New Hampshire. I don't think that the removal of the carnage was actually a problem. I think it was, they didn't think that they could get the alternate haunt in place because of difficulties with the pandemic. The sense is that agreements mean something, that a deal is a deal, that we spent a lot of time with this, that the carnage has been a problem, that it is an eyesore coming in and leaving town. I, I would have no intention of, of doing anything with that food cart issue because I think the board of selectmen have taken that away from us. And frankly, it's insulting for me to volunteer my time, only to be told that I need to confirm an approval that's already been given by the board of selectmen and all of this stuff is already done. So, you know, if it was on that, on principle alone, I would vote no. But I would, my inclination would be that we have a deal, we should stick with that deal, that no extension should be granted. And so I would vote no on all of the requests that they've made.
Okay, thank you. Ron, are you on the phone, online, what do you think? What are your thoughts?
Maybe unmuted. Can you, can you hear me? Hello?
I can hear you.
We can hear you now. Okay. I don't really need to have a vote as far as the food cart goes because it's already been done for us, like it or not. I do agree with Kim that we should take every other issue, item by item. I do have a question for the applicant and my question is pretty simple. When did you start to begin on the carnage, removing carnage?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me, yes? Carnage has never been, has never started to been removed because again, when the show shut down in March, we approached Andy and started the planning board process to see if we could simply just delay removing carnage just for a few months. Again, every community, and James, I have to tell you, I'm shocked that you're considering voting no across, across the board. Every community has come to every business and said, what can we do to help you? What can we do to help you survive? James, you're upset because you still think it's an end around, it was not an end around, it's what every community did. Every community went to the selectmen or, or, or the mayor to make those decisions because they had to be made in a split second for approval. It couldn't go through this whole approval process. And so, so let me, let me come back to you, what you were saying, Ron. Specifically, alls we're simply asking for tonight, the big issue is just to wait to remove carnage just a few more months because of the pandemic, because we could not build a new haunt this year. That was absolutely impossible for us to build a new haunt and to the grade that we build the haunts, which are very professional. And since that was impossible, we didn't remove carnage up to this point because we're asking if we can hold it, hold on to that just for a few more months. It couldn't be a simpler thing to ask the town. I can't believe we're getting this blowback from the town, from this. I just can't believe that, like, I'm still upset, James, what you said, to be honest with you. I'm unhappy about it. Every single community has risen. Do you know how hard it is to go and get up every day and go to Mel's and do 40% of the business and try and survive from day to day? And we're asking for one simple thing? One simple thing that we're asking for is just to hold on to one haunt for four more months? One simple thing that we're asking for is just to hold on to one haunt for four more months? And, and Mr. Chairman, the same thing. You know, you're saying, well, I understand it's a pandemic. Yes, it is a pandemic. We're getting up every single day of our lives trying to figure out how to get to the next day. Businesses here, there aren't a lot of businesses in Litchfield, so you're not going to hear a lot of blowback. But this is what it's like across America, trying to survive every day. And that's all we're asking for. You know, I'd like a little compassion from the board, just to put yourself in my situation, in Michael's situation. What is it like? What are we asking for? We're asking for next to nothing. We're asking for, just to extend that. And, and I'm sorry if I'm getting, getting annoyed, but I keep hearing these things from butters who say things like, you know, over and over again, like, we, we don't go before the board for anything. That's completely and absolutely 100% untrue. 100%, we've gotten a permit from everything we've ever done at, at that facility, including the two buildings that were out in the hayride, that were not in a plan because we weren't told to put them in a plan. I'm not an engineer. We go to the building department and they give us a plan. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting tired. I want to apologize to the board. I'm not sleeping well. I apologize if I'm over emotional with this. We're just simply asking for help to get through this season. That's all we're asking. And to do so, we can't build a new haunt this year. It can't be done professionally. There's no show to go buy supplies. And that, that's all we're asking for, really, is just that we can use this haunt just for a few more months past the deadline. I think it's a very entirely reasonable request. That's what I have to say. I hope I answered your question. I'm sorry if I'm overly emotional. I am tired, and it's difficult for me to get through this process because I just, I'm, I'm, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
The only, I guess if we can all speak again, I guess if Wayne can speak, I should be able to speak again. So, I guess if, if, if carnage is a professionally built haunt, go look at it. It's a mess. The fence is falling down, there's junk cars. What's professional about that? Show me a craftsman that would build something that crappy, and it's supposed to be this nice looking thing. So, they're not professionally built. You know, I think they're, I think they're mini golf, and some of that stuff looks great. But carnage is a pile of junk. Go look at it. You know, it'd be Einstein. Ray Charles could see that mess there.
Carnage is not just a pile of junk. I love how everybody calls it. The great thing is, is Rick, you want to know something? You call it a pile of junk, which means our guys did a terrific job building what they were supposed to build because it was supposed to resemble a junkyard. And that's absolutely what we did. And you know what?
Junkyards are not legal. Junkyards are not legal without a permit.
It's not a junkyard. It's not a junkyard.
It was.
The fire department has walked through that every single year. The building department has walked through that every single year. It is safe, it is secure. There's other things inside that that make it a haunted attraction. That's what makes a haunted attraction a haunted attraction. And yes, it's a miserable life situation that we're all in right now. I know it hasn't affected you, and I wish it didn't affect me, but it does affect us. Look at Applewood. Applewood just closed its stores permanently because they couldn't get enough help just to run a small restaurant. So imagine trying to run Mel's Funway Park and Spooky World and the pressure that it takes to do that. And we're trying to do it every single day the best we can. And I understand you don't want to see it, and guess what? Wayne and I don't want to see it either anymore. We don't. We want it gone. We're happy to remove that. We can't remove that right now. We can't run our business the way that we've run it for the last 15 years with the success that we've had to continue to bring people to Litchfield to visit places like Applewood, which unfortunately isn't going to be there anymore. But the people who go visit Romano's and get their pizza all the time, the people who stop at the Funtian's Farm on the way to us, leading us, the people who stop at the other farm. We are something that brings a lot of traffic to that town. And we employ as many employees as we can from the town. About 75% of Mel's starts their first job in Litchfield, at Mel's Funway Park. That's a pretty huge thing for us. We get to start these kids off before they go out. But I'm not going to get trapped on being told, oh, you guys have a junkyard. Yes. And when you watch a movie that looks like the junkyard also, that's called a set. And that's what we have. We have built a team. It is a set. That's what that is out here. When you go into 3D, that's another step. When you go into the colonies, that's another set. When you go into the manor, it's not a real mansion, is it? But it certainly looks like it. Are you going to call that a mansion? Because it has beds, and it has tables and chairs, and a big bathroom, and a library? Well, guess what? It's a set. It's something for people to go through and enjoy. And that's what they've been doing from year in and year out.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. I think, okay. I'm just, and, you know, it's hard for me. The, the carnage haunt, I mean, I, I went through that haunt, and I recall when I did the visit to the, to Mel's a while back. And I can tell you, I, personally, I had concerns going through there because I thought it was, there were parts of it that seemed to be, that could have been potential liability, to be honest. Okay? You had a lot of metal in there. You know, it concerned me because, you know, if kids are walking through there, you know, someone could get hurt. Someone can get cut. It just, it didn't look safe in, in terms of that. Now, that's, that's just my, my perception. But I just would, you know, caution you, I mean, you know, that, those types of things, you have to be careful, especially when you're dealing with, with the public. And, well, let me, let me ask you this question. Is carnage essential? Can you still remove it and continue with Spooky World? I guess my question is, is it that much of a deal to keep it open? And what, what's needed to take it down? I mean, you say you can't take it down, but what, I guess my question is, how long would it take to take down? I mean, what's, what, what goes into that? I guess is my, I'm just curious. Wayne, does anyone want to answer that question?
Yeah, Wayne, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. We, I could answer that question. Well, yes, we could take that down. Yes, yes, we could. We could even take that down by the date. Yes, by August 31st. So we're not saying that we cannot not take that down. That is a possibility, and we could remove that by August 31st. So I just want to make that clear. We're not saying that it can't come down. We are saying that it is going to come down after the season. That haunt has been used for many years. Haunts get tired. We revolve them out anyway. It's part of our process, always trying to create 25% of the show with something new, or 20%, I'm sorry, 20%. And to answer your question, it would be devastating for us not to be able to have that haunted attraction this year. It's already difficult enough to make it through. Again, we think it's a kind of a fair request just to ask just for continuation of, of just a few months, just to get through the season, and then it will come down by December 31st. So I hope I answered that question well, that yes, we could take it down by August 31st, as was originally planned. But with the pandemic, the inability to create a Class A first haunt, not being able to see the materials that we need to buy, then what we're asking for just an extension on this for a few months.
Michael, you remember every single business, Michael, and saying, what if a restaurant wasn't allowed to have their table? What if a pizza place wasn't allowed to use sauce anymore? You know, what if the football team out there was only allowed to bring five guys out there? What if you bought a brand new car and you didn't have a spear in it anymore? It's the type of thing that we've built our reputation based on the fact that we're giving our customers five haunted attractions for one price for them to all come through and enjoy our show. And because of what we're doing this year and how we're going to be streamlining our customers, and we're going to be having our tickets purchased in advance, and there's just going to be one straight line as people go through all of our haunted attractions for them now not to have the full show, which customers have been coming for years, and kids have been coming for years, and then all of a sudden, they don't have the show, especially this year, out of every other year, it looks like we're trying to take something away from the customer and screw all of those customers over who've been coming for 30 years of Spooky World. And Mel's Funway Park has a reputation of always giving more to our customers. And that's what we're trying to do now by making those little minor adjustments about widening. Nobody knew there was going to be a pandemic. Four feet was fine. The engineers thought four feet was fine. We, attorney thought four feet. And then you have a pandemic that comes along. So we asked for an eight-foot gap in the Tideland area so people wouldn't be digging into each other. So it's the same thing. We're, we're trying to give the customer what they expect to get when they come to a great facility like our facility. And that's one of the things that, that's why you're trying to keep it the way it is. It would be like going to a restaurant and having to take your own order. It's not giving the people what they've expected and what they've had for 30 years of spooky world.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I say something?
Go ahead.
This is Kate Stevens. I was just thinking that, you know, with this whole pandemic thing, if the reason why we wouldn't approve extending the deadline is out of principle, that I, I just can't imagine telling somebody no just because of principle when, like, there, it's obvious that revenue is down. So sure, construction might still be up, but the money coming in to pay that, for that construction is not. You know, the fire department goes through carnage every year, like they said, and they haven't had an issue with it so far. If anything, I would think that customers this year are looking for that familiarity of, you know, they see carnage every year and let's do it one more time, you know, because everything else has changed. So let's, you know, let's have the same show for once and give some people like something, you know, they're expecting, they're expecting these haunts, and then to take part of that away, it's like, great, here's another thing that's taken away. Like, it's obvious, anybody that has kids, that they're lacking all of these entertainment things, the summer and the spring. And I don't see why having this out there for a few more months, just because it's unsightly to look at when you drive by, that's just, that's, that's not a good enough reason for me, anyway, to take that down when it was all agreed upon and everything. And it does, it does sometimes feel like there's always excuses and, and these, these plans are changing, you know, multiple times every year. I feel like we're constantly talking about plans with Mel's. But at the same time, that every, I haven't heard an excuse that doesn't make sense. And I also haven't heard, haven't seen them not still working towards the main goal. You know, like, they removed the tires when we were concerned about the effect on the wildlife out there. If anything, you know, the carnage is probably a great home for all of those, like, little critters and everything out there. So I, I can't, I would have to say that I, I can't deny an extension on that, on that deadline, just out of principle. I don't think that's a good enough reason. But that's, that's just me. If we were, if this is the one that we're talking about right now. I don't know if we can, if it's too early to call, like, a vote on this specific issue or not?
No, no, it's not too late. Does anybody have anything else they want to add before we do that? Go ahead to do that. So I guess, you know, like Kim suggested, one of these at a time and go through them. So. All right. So the first one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was, I was gonna say, can I make a motion on the modification request number one, carnage? I'll make a motion to approve the deadline extension from August 31st, 2020, to December 31st, 2020, for the carnage hunt.
I'll second it. I have a motion. I have a second. Do I have discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, when I was talking about principle, I was talking about the food cart issue. Since that decision has already been made, there, on principle, there was no logical reason why these applicants come to us at this point. So that's what I was talking about. In terms of the carnage, that's not principle. That is, that's based on, on the fact that they can actually do it. There's nothing, they've admitted, there's nothing that would prevent them from doing it. And they should do it since they promised to do it. So there's nothing to prevent them. They chose not to do it because they thought that this board would grant them the extension. I, I don't, I, I agree that they could, they could, they sound like they're creative people. They could find a creative way of, of putting together a substitute haunt. Even now, they can do that. So the, the fact is that that has been an issue that has been longstanding, that, that they agreed to do it. There is no reason why they can't do it. In fact, they've admitted they can do it. And because that, they should do it. So that's my objection to it.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. I have a motion to approve the extension of the deadline from August 31st to December 31st, 2020. And I have a second. I'm sorry. Did someone say something? I'm sorry. Okay. I have a second. All those in favor of approving the deadline extension from, from August 31st to December 31st, please roll call vote. Signify by saying aye.
Kimberly, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Kim is no.
Kim is no?
Yep.
All right. So, okay, so those, let me do it this way. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
Okay. I got two, right?
Yes.
Those
Yeah.
who are opposed, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
This is James Muffetti. I vote no.
Okay. Thank you. So that's three. Anybody abstained? Okay. The motion passes 2-3-0.
So it looks like Mr. Chairman, you said the motion passes?
Sorry, the motion is defeated. Is defeated 2-3-0. Yeah. Okay. Um, moving on, what's the next issue we have here? Pavilion number two, as to the pavilion number two. Does anyone want to make a motion about that? This has to do with the ship-led siding on the north and eastern sides of the pavilion.
Can we have a discussion about that? Or is it too late? This is Kim.
We can still have a discussion about it. We haven't voted on anything.
They still have seven to eight weeks. And could they get construction workers out there to get it compliant? And could they get construction workers out there to get it compliant? It sounded like Pavilion One only had one side left and Pavilion Two was half done. Within the seven or eight, eight-week timeframe to get them to their compliance hearing, could they have that done?
Oh, um, I guess you can ask, I mean, we can ask the applicant.
Yes, I'd like to ask the applicant, um, that.
Fine.
You want me to repeat that?
You guys have, no, you got, you guys have heard that there's a pandemic, right?
Yes, and I'm a privately owned business too. I, I get it.
It, it's just outrageous that given what Mike and Wayne are up against, a small business trying to get crews, uh, working and they have, you know, whatever, less than half capacity that they have coming to their site, that there's no compassion or sympathy or flexibility from a community. I work in many towns in Southern New Hampshire and Litchfield seems to be the only one not working with a small business. The goal of Pavilion Number Two, to keep it as is, is because there is no, there are no haunts available to fill Pavilion Number Two. They're, they're going to keep it as the food service area. The Pavilion Number One is done, all four sides, except for the small trim work that needs to be done, as I said at the outset. Pavilion Number Two will be done by December 31st. And it allows an open area for their guests to meet, um, and have, you know, outdoor and it's kind of open air. Um, so it allows for the social distancing, it allows pressure to come into Pavilion Number Two. And then it's done this year and, and buttoned up with the ship lap siding by December 31st.
Is there a reason why there can't be construction done in seven to eight weeks to get it compliant? Is it because you can't get the crews to come in?
Right now, we have two guys who are doing all the maintenance in our entire park. And that includes running Mel's Funway Park and taking care of the go-karts and taking care of the batting cages and taking care of all the other problems that are happening. It, it's very difficult to have, I mean, it took everything in our power to get that first pavilion done. Right now, like I said, we have only two people to do all the work of Mel's. And because Mel's took so long to get open because we weren't allowed to open, that's why everybody was able to, even people who normally wouldn't be construction were helping, handing out meals, helping out this, doing that. Now that Mel's is open, the few people we have in the crew are running their stations again, running the go-karts, running the batting cages. They're behind the counters, they're taking care of the park. And we have our two guys who take care of everything. And normally, like I said, there's a whole nother crew that's supposed to be working on only Halloween this time of year. And we do not have that crew. We only have our Mel's maintenance guys.
And there's no plans to hire anybody outside then, right? There's no plans to hire anybody from the outside to do it?
I'm trying to hire more and more people. I mean, to go out and hire a construction, construction crew, again, I just have to state to the board, Mel's Funway Park, like, I don't know, a few million businesses in America are in turmoil. Unfortunately, we don't have state highway contracts, so the money doesn't just keep coming. We're a fun park, a small little fun park in a small little town in Litchfield. And people are not coming out. Money is not coming in. We have to keep this park running with the people we have to continue to make it work. It doesn't take two, three people. We still have every single shift, 15 kids that are coming in, working their butts off, wearing masks, behind plexiglass, sanitizing after every import, doing everything they can to work, to make a dollar during this miserable situation. The people just aren't there right now. At least the people who we can get to do this type of work.
And right now, the sides are open, they're not just like plywood or something, they're open to the air, right?
Right now, on building number one, it's completely closed with the ship lap. And I believe it's just about 100% sprayed with the doors done. Building number two, the ship lap is already on the side that faces 3A. It's also already done on the side that faces, uh, let's say Manchester. And we've already got a little bit of it done on the top and that's already been sprayed and painted as well. The only, we're, we're just, we, and we don't have the wood. Right now, the materials aren't there either. We finally just got this, on the first building, to do the little trim part. It, it's been difficult. It has been tough, especially when you're ordering small numbers like we are. The big contractors out there, they're gobbling up everything upstairs. Go to Home Depot, see if you can find a good hammer nowadays. It, it's tough to find products out there.
But, I mean, are there physical walls there? I'm sorry, I haven't gone to, um, see it myself, but are there physical walls there?
Walls around two sides, 100% physical walls on two sides. The other two sides are open because the way that it's been used in the past is that was used in that food service area where people could sit, they could have something to eat, they could get a drink and be under shelter at that point. Because of just how things are going this year, because of all the expenses to make everything happen with a pandemic, we wanted to keep that little area open. We still did all the ship lap around the other side. It's all been painted, it's already been treated. It's just that one side that's still open so we can sell sweatshirts, sell t-shirts and have people sit down and relax and enjoy themselves while they're there.
So, so I would think trying to enclose the space is the opposite of what we want to do during pandemic season. I would think we should even, um, I mean, if anything, concert halls and everything are doing everything they can to take walls down and keep things out, keep the air flowing, the outdoor air flowing. I don't think it makes, makes any sense to try to close those walls in.
Anybody have anything else they want to add about that? Anybody? Jay, do you have any comments you want to make?
Uh, no, not of the ship lap. I, I'm, this, I think, you know, to Kate's point, I, I think it, it makes sense to leave those two sides open through the season.
Okay. All right. Um, okay. So, um, as to Pavilion Number Two, um, I guess, what is the will of the board? Do we have a motion on the table to, um, approve this one or to go forward with this one?
I'll make a motion to approve extending the deadline for Pavilion Number Two, uh, ship lap siding.
To December 31st?
Yeah.
2020. Okay. All right. Do I have a second to the motion?
This is Ron. I'll, I'll second it.
Second by Ron. Okay. Do I have a discussion?
Uh, this is Jim. Um, so I know I earlier said that I was opposed to all of these. I, I think Kate makes a, a very good point. Um, and so, you know, I, if they want to keep it open, uh, I, I don't think I have any objection to it. Um, and I would, um, I would be fine with extending the deadline to closing that in until the December 31st proposal.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any more, any other discussion? Okay. All those, um, in favor of extending the deadline to December 31st, 2020 for Pavilion Number Two, uh, to keep the, uh, southern and western sides open, um, for the purposes to keep the bar and food service open and visible to guests, um, please signify by saying aye. I'll do a roll call vote, aye. Michael Croto, aye.
Kimberly Queenen, aye.
Kate, Kate Stevens, aye.
James Buffetti, aye.
Ron Stevens, aye.
Two, three, four. Okay. All those opposed? James, did you vote?
Yes, I voted, I voted in favor. I think Ron hasn't voted yet.
Was it Ron who voted? Okay. I thought someone hadn't voted. I'm sorry. One, two, okay, thank you. All right. Um, opposed, abstained, motion passes 5-0-0. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think Ron voted.
Yes, I did.
Oh, he didn't?
Yeah. Yeah.
I voted aye.
I thought I missed somebody, but I apologize. Um, the next one would be the minor plan changes, uh, to the minor plan modifications for the markups. Um, does anybody have any questions on that before we take a vote?
This is Ron. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the applicant's request.
All right. I have a motion on the table to approve the minor plan modifications, um, for one, the widening of the stone dust footpath to the kitty Mel's area from four feet to eight feet. Eliminate the grass strips between the bounce houses to have one large stone dust pad for the four bounce house features. Move the two Quonset cherry trees located in front of the bumper boat pool to the area between kitty Mel's and the restaurant patio, acceptable to the building inspector. And, um, I would just put a condition on that, that that information is, um, added to the updated plan. Okay. So that's the motion. I, do I, uh, have a second?
Kim, uh, Queenen will second that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do I have discussion? Okay. All right. All those in favor of minor modifications to the plan as, um, has been, uh, listed here on number four, please, um, signify by saying aye. Uh, roll call vote. Michael Croto, aye.
Kimberly Queenen, aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
James Buffetti, aye.
Ron Stevens, aye.
Okay. Any opposed or abstained? The motion passes 5-0-0. Anything else?
Chairman, members of the board, thank, no, thank you very much. We will have Keach Nordstrom update the plans and get them submitted to, uh, to Joan and the town and Jay.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for being on the call this evening. Thank you.
Could, could I just ask? I'm just confused. Did we, did we get voted no on, on the carnage? Is, is that what it is at the end of the day?
Motion was defeated, yes.
Okay. And what was the specific reason why that was defeated? Uh, I didn't get that part. Why you wouldn't let us have that extra four months under, in, under the circumstances of the pandemic? Can someone just answer that for me? I was unclear on that. Why? What would that hurt have, um, lost?
All right. That's fine. I think the reason was that, um, the carnage hunt, um, it sounded as though, you know, you were, you were telling us that it could be removed by August 31st. And we're taking that to mean that you basically are agreeing that you would remove it if it had to be removed. So, um, it is part of the condition of approval that was done back in, and, um, the board feels that it wants that, that piece to be, uh, in compliance, um, that there was an agreement, remove it, and that it will be removed.
And the board will ignore the fact that this is a pandemic in going forward? Okay. I just want to make that clear. That, that, that's no, that, that's like an entirely reasonable request. The board's going to ignore that for the record.
The, the board for the record
Thank you.
respectfully took that into consideration, but I think there was a feeling among the board members that carnage has to go. And it has to go, uh, because it can go. So.
Because of what? I'm sorry, that cut out. Because of what? I'm sorry?
Because it can, because you would be able to remove it.
Yes. It, it, and it would be removed December 31st, by December 31st as well. But again, that's, I, I'm still totally confused by that process. I'm not sure if someone had their information incorrect or what the process was. I think there was some misinformation in there, to be honest with you, about what can happen. And, and yes, I was trying to convey that, yes, it could in an emergency be removed by the 31st of August. Yes, it can be, of course. And, but, and it also will be removed by December 31st as well. Maybe I did a poor job conveying exactly what was happening in there. I just feel like, uh, you know, it just doesn't seem entirely reasonable to me that like it's a simple request under the circumstance of the pandemic to allow us to operate that so we could have an entire year since our business is right now only running at 40% and, and it's gulping for, uh, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to piece together what went wrong here. I'm confused. As Andy interjected at the very end, um, I'm, I'm just confused by what harm would it do to keep that an extra four months? I'm confused.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, anybody else has anything they want to add? I think the board voted. Um, I mean, I think, I, I think we, I mean, I think like find it, but maybe, maybe if it was a misunderstanding, I mean, no, I mean.
I feel like I didn't explain myself. I feel like I didn't explain myself well. And maybe I messed things up. And I apologize if that was the case. And again, I'm all emotional about the situation, but I, I feel like I didn't explain well that what we're asking for is yes, it is going to be removed positively by December 31st. And we were just asking for a four-month extension, which wouldn't hurt anybody. It's been there for years. I, I, and, and under the circumstances, whi- which are incredibly apparent, I'm surprised that, uh, maybe I wasn't clear on exactly what was happening, you know? So our intent, what, what we were asking was just a delay of four months and still remove everything. At the end, of course, carnage would be removed and it would just be simply four more months after years of being there is all we were asking the board under the circumstances so we could remain with five haunts. And the only other information, and I, and I don't want to, I, I didn't know whether to butt in every time. You know, I try not to. Can I just finish this thought? And what it is, again, I didn't know whether to butt in every time. I'm not a professional litigator or whatever the case is. Uh, but James was right. We could remove that by the 31st. But the part that he, James, it, it's not true that we can build an A haunt. You, you did state that on the record, saying there's no reason why we can't move forward and build an A, in, in A plus haunt. We cannot build an A plus haunt this year. That's impossible. There's no show. There's no, there's, there's no show to go to and buy all the products. It, it couldn't happen this year. So I, again, I think I, I wasn't clear. Uh, uh, and I didn't know if the board would be willing to revisit this one more time and, and how unclear, uh, I may have been through that process. And I apologize. And again, I apologize if I'm emotional, just trying to get through this year, have five haunted attractions for what people are used to. We have, I, I can't handle people complaining that they're, that they're getting gypped money if they show up in this four haunted attractions because we cannot build a fifth haunted attraction this year. It can't be done to the level of what people expect for spooky world. So I didn't know, I think I wasn't clear. I, I think that was a misunderstanding that we could build something, we can't. I think that was some misinformation there. And I didn't know if the board would revisit this one more time. I didn't know if, if anybody would be willing to open this up again.
I guess I'll, I'll. Keep going on discussions on this. I, I guess that's, that's fine if we're going to keep the discussion going, but there was a vote taken. Um, I think it should end, but if they're willing to open up the whole site plan process again, I guess I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to them reconsidering spooky world. I mean, Spooky World, I mean, uh, that haunt. But we need to open up the whole site plan to review the whole thing again, so we can talk about other issues that we gave up on so that they could, so that carnage can go away. For instance, lighting. We really, lighting is a major problem, but I walked away from that because they were going to take down carnage. But there, there is no way they even come close to meeting your requirements for lighting, not even close. The candle fire power is probably eight, 10, 15 times to allow. We didn't push that issue. Want to bring this back up, we need to be able to bring up other issues um, to, to go forward, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Chairman, Andy Proman here. I'm still on the call, but my battery died on my laptop, so. Um, I, I would suggest this, Mr. Chairman. Um, let me, uh, let me, I, I would suggest we end this, uh, tonight. I will confer with Wayne and Michael. We will let the board know what, uh, what we intend to do.
Okay. That's fair enough. Um. Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I think the board ruled, made its decision. Um, if you have something that you want to propose, or you want to come back, you're certainly welcome to do that. Um, but for now, I think the vote is going to stand. As to, as to carnage. The other things, you know, are going to be allowed. Okay?
Okay, uh, I'm getting off the call, Mr. Chairman, members. Uh, thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Night. Um, so committee reports, are there many reports about meeting? Anything for an RPC?
Uh, yeah, uh, this is Kim, though. I have one more question on that. Are they still coming back on December 31st for their compliance? Review?
Um, thi- this is Jay. We still have, we are still planning on having them come in for September 1st, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, yes, I do have a committee report. Uh, Heritage Commission meets, um, virtually next Tuesday, the 14th, um, 7:00 PM online. NRPC, uh, also had their quarterly meeting in June. Um, let me just find it, hold on. Give me a second, Jerry. Here we go. Um. We just proposed the NRPC bylaws amendments, um, that was approved. The NRPC Foundation 501 3C for nonprofit was approved. And, uh, they set the grant, um, their budget, right, for, uh, the dues, and they did not go up for the year. I do want to, um, bring up a couple of points that came around. You know how we are a member of NRPC, of the, of us, in the third, you know, with 13 towns altogether? Uh, there's a couple of planning board issues that did arise that I think we should be aware about. Um, in regards to housing, Amherst brought up a, uh, what's happening in their town is they're starting to limit the development of smaller units. Um, it, it seems like their planning board is now being pushed more and more to encourage the McMansions, and there's some turmoil on trying to get planning board members on or off. But, uh, the gentleman there was surprised because they've been working on, uh, eight to 10 years on affordable housing and workforce housing, and they're surprised that this turn is taking, where the town is starting to not want to go to the smaller units. This was also, uh, reiterated with the town of Pelham. Uh, there was a citizens petition to abolish the Conservation Committee. I don't know if that'll happen. And the reason that was happening is they want to go back to the McMansions in Pelham. It seems to be a movement, not saying it's going to happen, but that, that's a concern. Uh, Merrimack, uh, their commercial district on the 3A quarter across the river, they're saying it's starting to turn more from commercial into now being more residential. And Nashua also had a trend where they had something called the Bronsthem Apartment Complex, which had 38 units on four acres in Nashua. They're redoing the 38 units, they're going to add another 160 units into that four acres. And so, in, in their respect, they're engaging more affordable housing. You see how they're going more to the smaller units? Um, let me see if there's another thing I wanted to do. Hudson, uh, may have some regional impact. I think Jay can elaborate more on this with this, um, proposed Hudson Logistics Center. Um, the Conservation Committee, the Planning Board, and 100 public attendees walked the site. Um, there's a, that project, I guess, on this southern side is a residential area. And, you know, of course, they're going to do traffic studies, water study, you know, air pollution and home value studies. Um, let me just see. Uh, Wayne did bring up the, uh, Nashua was working on the outdoor dining, um, to, to try to help the businesses along that road. But they really were going after, you know, trying to, the parking and the landscaping. They were trying to waive that kind of thing, and also the, the, the way the streets were moving to get the, um, tables out onto the, uh, main road, right? Uh, let's see, and they're also working with their businesses to be on the summer. So, I think that's it. I will bring up one thing that maybe our board should be aware of. I'll let Kevin Lynch know so he can tell the board. Uh, the other thing that came up at the NRPC meeting, um, not really planning board related, but town related. I think voting. Hollis and Brookline have a co-op where they're going to start to look at maybe doing drive-through voting at an athletic field. And Merrimack is encouraging absentee ballots, um, for the upcoming election as well. Um, and Pelham is a little bit alarmed about the census. I don't think they think everybody's being counted, and they are leery they might lose a senate seat or some kind of representation if the numbers don't get in. And on a funny note, I'll end it, because I know the meeting's getting late, but Wilton, I think, had a cute story, Jay, where, um, I guess their local watering holes, I guess Brookline and Mason with the quarry, the local watering holes, uh, because of COVID, people are coming up to swim in their towns, and they don't have the right, uh, you know, uh, parking permits, and there's not a lot of parking involved. So the town of Wilton, which is small, I guess, uh, had to write some tickets, parking tickets out to everybody. And they feel guilty, because I think they made $20,000 in parking tickets. I thought that was cute. So not really planning board related, but I thought I'd throw that in. But, but you can see how Pelham and Amherst going for the McMansions, Nashua going for smaller homes, and, and Merrimack starting to flip from commercial to more resident. That's it.
Okay.
Please tell me I wasn't on mute.
No, I'm on mute. On my end, you weren't, so. So, Conservation met in the town parking lot last Thursday. Very short meeting due to the thunderstorm. Um, not much to report. Uh, there is a potential to get a grant, um, to, um, for trail access in town, so we're looking at that. Uh, the Capital Improvement Committee met, uh, last Monday, I believe. Um, or the, was it Monday? Or there was the Monday before, I forget now. But anyway, um, we, um, discussed, um, we talked at the library. I guess there was discussion about possibly, um, in the future, having a new library in Litchfield, and where that's going to look like, what that's going to look like, where it's going to be. Um, I guess, uh, the library is complaining that there's a lot of issues with capacity and what they can and can't do in the library. Um, the police, um, and the fire department are still working on, um, you know, building, uh, one of the things that came up was, um, would it be interesting, would it be interesting to see the police station, um, be moved into the town hall and then building a new town hall? Um, that was one proposal, um, or having, um, having the police station in takeover town hall, and then having some sort of a modular facility, um, on another, on, on site. I don't know, that, that was part of the discussion. Um, and of course, um, the school, um, you know, what, what's going to happen to Griffin Memorial School? Is it, there's a lot of problems, I guess, with the school in terms of flooding and issues and mold issues, and if it decides to move, wherever it's going to move, what's going to happen to the old school? So there's a lot of things going on there. I think our next meeting is the 20, 20th of July. We're going to be talking with the solid waste people and the Recreation Commission. And Jay's, uh, been kind enough, um, to do a survey for the Capital Improvement Committee, so. Um, looking forward to the, to that discussion. Um, Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee? Yes?
Um, Mike, I just had a, I think I did watch, um, part of one of the Capital Improvement meetings, or I listened to it, and, um, that, you guys were talking about, uh, conservation, like there were opportunities to buy more land, um, by Conservation Commission.
I forgot, yes. The Conservation Commission did speak.
I just wanted to, um, you just noticed that there seemed to be some questions, like, you know, why would we spend money on that versus, uh, you know, if the police needs more space or something like that? And, um, and I'll, I'll write into the board too. But I just wanted to, I guess, remind them that, you know, the, on our, on our master plan and everything, um, the very first thing we always seem to come back to is we want to keep this as a more agricultural and open space town. And you can see all of this development, obviously, that's coming up around Hudson and Nashua and everything. Like, all, we're cramming ourselves in here real fast. So, I think if there's any opportunity for us to keep Litchfield as woodsy as possible, I don't think that's something that we can just be like, oh, well, we'll get to it. You know, we'll do it next time. Like, that's, that should be like first priority in, in my opinion, um, just going off of the master plan.
Right, and, um, I know there was, um, some discussion on that. Um, and, um, how many properties the Conservation Commission owns in town. Um, and it's still a good, an ongoing discussion. Um, and just so you know, the, the Capital Improvement Committee meetings are public meetings, so if anybody, anybody can attend them, um, or be on the call. Um, so if, you know, I encourage the members of the planning board, if you're interested, to, if you want to learn more about it, um, you know, join us on the 20th of July, uh, for that meeting. It's at six o'clock.
Okay, okay, great, thanks.
Okay, yeah, you're welcome. Um, one more thing, the Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee did meet about the, I may have mentioned this before, uh, the shoreline permit for that Hudson Logistics Center, um, made some comments to DES, and now the alteration of terrain permit is coming up. Uh, and that hearing will be coming up soon, so I'll probably be on the call for that as well. And I'll keep you posted what's happening with that. Uh, anybody have anything else? Jay, did you have anything for NRPC?
Um, uh, not a lot, just wanted to add a couple of quick comments, uh, just in terms of the survey that, uh, we're working on, uh, that we mentioned at the CIP meeting. Um, that's also going to come, uh, to the planning board to take a look at, because that's going to contribute to the community facilities chapter of the master plan. So you'll get a chance to weigh in on that also. Um, and, and then just to follow up, and then, you know, absolutely, we, um, will be reviewing and commenting on the logistics center in, you know, proposed logistics center in Hudson, because of course, that's a project of regional impact. Uh, massive project. About two and a half million square feet in total, i- in all phases. That's all I've got.
Okay. Um, approval of minutes of this, uh, June 16, 2020 meeting. Did anyone have an opportunity to take a look at the minutes? Have any questions? And do we want to approve them?
Uh, this is Kim, I, I thought I just saw a typo. I can answer that, uh, with Joan, on the, on the public input section.
Okay.
Uh, after, it says Rick Shabano, uh, was present. Uh, he was concerned about Mel's Tea Off, Funway Park, any changes were to come to the planning board. It just seems like a weird sentence, like, if you take away about Mel's Tea Off, any changes were to come to the planning board? Maybe like, if any changes were to come to the planning board? It just seems to be a word missing, yeah.
Okay.
Not, yeah. So if Joan's, uh, going to translate, just look at the first sentence under public input. Between Mel's Tea Off and the word, any changes were to come to the planning board. I, I think something's missing. Like the word if, or something. But the rest looked fine.
Okay, very good. Um. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved, James.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second, do I have discussion? All those signify by saying aye. Roll call vote, Michael Proto, aye.
Kimberly Queenen, aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
Ames Buffetti, aye.
Ron Stevens, aye.
Okay, opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you. All right. Any other business before the board this evening?
So adjourned.
All right, um, yes, so, uh, if there's nothing else this evening, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Okay, I have, I have a motion. Have a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, I'm sure I don't have discussion. Um, all those in favor of signifying to adjourn, please roll call aye. Michael Proto, aye.
Kimberly Queenen, aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
Ames Buffetti, aye.
Ron Stevens, aye.
All right, opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you, everybody, for being on the call. Um, and, um, everyone be well, be safe, and we'll be, um, with you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Good night, thank you.
Night.
Night.
Right.
Thank you, Jay.